29, I'll call the meeting to order. And I do understand that we have public audience, so if you'd like to step forward to the spot on the floor there. Just state your name, your address, please.
My name is Miriam Johnson, and I'm at 320 Bushy Hill Road in Simsbury area. And thank you for letting me come here tonight. I feel that it was very fortuitous. And the reason I'm here is I witnessed something last night that was so disturbing to me that I had to come. I had no choice. And I was compelled to come. And I hope you bear with me, a little nervous, but I spent a lot of time formulating my thoughts, and I'm glad that it's tonight because it's all fresh in midnight. But anyway, I am here tonight to address all of you, members of the Board of Education for the town, about something that I witnessed last night that left me incredulous and frankly afraid, very disturbing. It has to do with the curriculum being taught at our Simsbury schools. I viewed an eighth grade social studies assignment generated from Henry James Memorial School. Its title was "Elections." Without having a copy to refer to and not having a photogenic memory, I would describe it to the best of my recollection. It was a short assignment, and I want to emphasize the word "short," that presented three vertical columns. The first listed five or six issues that impacted the current presidential election. Among them were racism, climate change, and immigration. Included among other topics were unemployment and regulation issues. The second column was entitled "Candidate A," and the third was "Candidate B." Each fictional candidate stands on the issues in the first column were briefly described. And I need to emphasize the word "briefly." I would comment on the verbiage used as it is related to the two candidates, but I would be entering an area that is open to interpretation and bias. Despite the glaringly obvious fact that these two candidates mimic the current candidates for president, and I won't hold it for obvious reasons, I will add that whoever generated this assignment, and I'm very curious to know who did it, certainly took poetic license and selectively chose leading words, specific leading words. The student was to read both candidates' views and highlight which one they agreed with, and thus who they would vote for. What stood out so plainly to me was that the wording used by the creator of this assignment made one set of candidates' views stand out as the obvious better choice. I would liken the wording to those used as to asking a student to choose between a plate of spinach and a slice of cake for dessert. Their unquestioning young minds would naturally gravitate to the one that sounded the best or the nicest. There are words to describe this tactic. Let me read to you the definition and the word indoctrination as stated in the Oxford Dictionary. "The process of teaching a person or group to accept a set of beliefs uncritically." And that's the key word to me personally, "uncritically." Here is one example to make my point. The topic of minimum wage. Candidate B is described as wanting to raise it to $15 per hour. It was worded in such a way to make candidate A look far less generous and fair, not a nice guy. Left out was the pertinent information regarding the many small business owners who were forced to either cut employees' hours, fire them, or close their businesses altogether due to the unsustainability of a higher wage. This is fact, not fiction. One example is a bar in New York City called The Coffee Shop located in Union Square. Frequented by celebrities and hugely successful, it was forced to close in 2018 because of the enforced new high wage. Over 100 people lost their jobs. How could eighth graders make an educated choice without knowing the negative economic impacts such as this one? The malleable minds of these young students were corralled into reading woefully incomplete descriptions of every single topic listed in column one. What should have been presented as a teachable moment, to use "critical thinking," there's that word again, "critical thinking," based on economic real-life facts, became indoctrination at its finest. What ideas could be discussed to find a solution for all? That would have been a teachable moment. That is what frightened me. This was a missed opportunity to encourage healthy debate and discussion, not who can yell the loudest, based on all the details of individual platforms of the candidates involved. How does the same go? The devil is in the details. Isn't that what education is all about? Questioning issues based on unfiltered information that is not suppressed on any subject should be every teacher's goal. That is what happens in Cuba, China, and Russia, where citizens are denied selected information every single day. It should never, ever happen in our country or in our town. I would like to add that a year ago, I viewed another assignment generated from the seventh grade at the same school. It was a science assignment on global warming. The reading material was not generated from an accredited scientific journal, a specific qualified scientist, or other acclaimed scientific think tank. The article used to teach these children was from the news organization called CNN. It was totally subjected to CNN's interpretation, and from what I could read, they used it with a very heavy hand. Are you shocked? Because if not, you should be. Since when do we use any mainstream media, any of them, as an outlet, media outlet, which lays itself open to the long arm of bias as a teaching tool for our children? This should outrage and strike fear into everyone who wants to remain in a free society, free of thought control, free of indoctrination and propaganda, no matter what side of the fence it's coming from. The important takeaway lesson in all of this is the ability to use critical thinking. That is what is being lost in our schools. Our students, based on what I have seen, are being subliminally encouraged to regurgitate information that is being forced on them, instead of them being taught to explore all the facts and then make decisions of themselves. If someone like me knows of just these two incidents, then there is no doubt in my mind that what I have seen is just the tip of the iceberg. I cannot believe, and I do not want to believe, that I am the only person who feels this way. This should not happen here or anywhere. I will end by referencing an article by a man named Jonah Connor, co-founder of IDEA, Institute for Democratic Education in America. He's the founder, educational director of Fertile Grounds Project, a nonprofit organization from New York City that provides youth with educational programming that reaches beyond the classroom. The following is an excerpt from IDEA dated March 19, 2010, regarding a workshop he sponsored for educators. He states in a more succinct way what I am trying to say. And this is his words. "The difference between education and indoctrination is that education opens the mind, indoctrination closes it. Education is a process-driven approach to engaging in the knowledge and ideas of the world. Education is playful, experimental, and mysterious. Education opens doors of intellectual exploration and equips its students with the tools they will need to dissect, analyze, and interpret the information that they find." And I'll interject, not that it's given to them. Indoctrination, on the other hand, is a results-driven approach that aims to instill in people a set of habits and beliefs that align with an ideology or political agenda. Indoctrination narrows the lens through which we are able to see the world and ensures that all the information that we receive is interpreted through the filter of the promoted ideology. The problem lies in the fact that the majority of spaces, institutions, and philosophies that we call educational are in fact examples of indoctrination. That's what I have to say, but I now want to address you, Mr. Curtis, the superintendent of schools. Are you aware that this type of...
So ma'am, we don't, this is not that forum. You're more than welcome to do your public comments if you'd like to reach out to Mr. Curtis via email. That's the appropriate way to do that. If you could give Katie your comments. Do you need them, Katie?
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for having me.
Appreciate it.
All right. So now we're on to Board and Administrative Communications. Ryan.
I'm all set tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Jeff.
Yeah. Actually, today I had a great webinar with NSBA. We are starting a new campaign, and I share this with you because this is really important, that we filter down to each state. And this is about public school transformation, where the public schools are going from here. So it's a very exciting campaign that we're going to enroll and rattle out to all the state associations, and it's all about the equity, access, and innovation in the times of COVID, and, you know, where our public schools are going from here. So there were a number of fantastic speakers, videos, and I will forward to you once it comes to me, but it was very worth watching, you know, even bits and pieces of it because it talks about the public school's, you know, situation from here on forward, not just only affecting us, but affecting around the country. So that's something that was very exciting to report.
Great. We'll take it. Jen. Okay. Amy, do you have anything now? Neil.
Yeah, just want to remind everybody, of course, that four of our schools next Tuesday do turn into polling places, so Terriffill, Latimer Lane, Tooton Hills, and Henry James. And I just want to thank the folks at those schools, the principals in particular, and the head custodians, who have really partnered with the town officials to make sure all of the safety and cleaning protocols are in place to be able to do everything safely. And, you know, it's a big undertaking, certainly for the town side, and, you know, our custodians and principals do a nice job helping to facilitate it. So looking forward to a little bit of a different day next Tuesday.
Thank you.
So is Susan.
We're all on the cards next Thursday.
I just wanted to remind everyone, as Veterans Day approaches, our principals are reaching out to families to provide pictures and quotes and a variety of ways in which to celebrate our veterans. And so as we get closer, I can share more of that information. I think we have a meeting November 10th, but it should be a very well-acknowledged day, and the purpose of why we're in school is to be able to do that. So looking forward to that. Then last week, I had gotten an email from our math department chair, and there's an online math competition. And he had said to me that he had 198 students that wanted to participate, that signed up for it, and that to me, I said I haven't seen that number of kids that wanted to do that, and he was just...
Is that across the grades?
I believe so. It was a high school competition that they engaged in. So I just wanted to share that with you, that kids are engaged and looking forward to these kinds of opportunities.
Mr. Curtis.
A couple things, yes. So had an opportunity, Amy and I today met with Jeff from TechDon, kind of ensure that that ball keeps rolling on the facilities and enrollment side. And what Jeff has put together, and I'll share with you in my Friday update, is a little bit of a Gantt chart, a order of operations from trying to present this project to see if we can get it on the Capital Five Year Plan, which is a conversation we'll have with the Board of Finance at our three-board meeting. Amy and I are going to try to schedule a conversation with Rob next week to just talk about that process a little bit. But Jeff is somebody that will be very much at the ready to help us develop that grant application to the state of Connecticut, facilitate an initial meeting with the state of Connecticut. So it was just a good way to touch base with Jeff again, who's been so valuable to us, and make sure we're going to take those right steps as we have some, you know, big decisions as a community to think about from the spring. The second was, four or five times a year, I meet with the PTO presidents. We did that this morning via Zoom. Sue Lemke joined me in that, and I talked through just some of the transition, the first couple months of school here, talking through the data that we look at, those leading indicators in school decision-making, which we'll put up in a minute. Just had a good feedback session about how they view the opening of school as them. We had a nice mix of both parents who have kids in distance learning, and obviously across the levels at the different schools. So always a good resource and a good meeting for me to hear and get a pulse on what's going on. So the last piece I'll share is, I just, we've been doing this at each board meeting. We've got the clicker. We're not going to put Liz in that situation, are we? Jeez, Liz. We invite her, and then we make her run the whole show. Welcome. Oh, it's not in there?
It's not.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Well, what I will do is just kind of share where we are. So as you remember, we have those three columns, which are the leading indicators. One promotes as much in-school instruction as possible. Then you have that kind of middle model that has you relook at your mitigation strategies and promotes more of a hybrid model. So a couple things in general happened last week that I wanted to share with the board and members of the public. This data tracking, you may have noticed, went from a one-week, kind of a seven-day rolling average, where you look at the cases per 100,000, to now a two-week. So the state's working on a 14-day roll rather than a seven-day roll. And also, if you've been kind of keeping up and watching, and I know, you know, the percentage of positive cases has risen, and we've seen spikes in various communities. The governor's talking very much about local decision-making, as opposed to in April when we kind of looked at strategies that swept across the state. He's talking more about metrics as they apply to your county, how they apply to your local health district, and even how they apply to your own community. So they've created different tools that actually, in a letter this Friday to both staff and parents, I'm going to apply some links to, just to, so people see what's out there. You know, there's maps of each community. You can go in and see the rate and how it's color-coded. So Farmington Valley in comparison to the county and the overall state is still in a positive place, we're at 5.6 cases per 100,000. But that's an increase over what was three the week before, and certainly we had a run between like 2 and 2.5 for a few weeks. So there have definitely been some upticks in Avon and in Farmington in particular that we're keeping a close eye on. We have a weekly meeting, Zoom meeting with the Farmington Valley Health District. Really what they're seeing is there's many healthcare workers in those communities. There's been an increase in positive diagnosis in healthcare workers. We haven't been impacted significantly in our student population at this point. We've been fortunate there. We've had three student cases since school opened. And as the governor's talked about, the Department of Public Health has talked about early on here, and the research they're putting together, not in Connecticut, but even nationwide, there does not look to be significant community transmission within schools. The virus will come in from the outside, and the school is seemingly doing a good job of mitigating those strategies. So we will continue to monitor this. I think this week is an important week to see what this looks like in terms of our county, in terms of Farmington Valley. We have decisions to make on Simsbury High School. We've put out a date that we'd like to see a full return-to-person transition. That gets complicated by an increasing rate, so we need to put that information at the table and continue to think through that. Our goal is to stay in in-person instruction, obviously, as long as we can. And I think we've been successful to this point. We want to be thoughtful about moving forward and keeping ourselves positioned to do so. So I will certainly keep people up to date. This chart will go out to parents and staff as well this week with updated data. And I just think I'm going to continue to try to familiarize people with the tools that are out there that we're looking at, so that we're all kind of looking at and interpreting the same information. But the state had a tough day today. You know, the positivity rate in the state was four, and that's a significant increase over what we've seen. So we'll have to see again, is that a blip? Is this a trend? And I know everybody's very mindful of tracking that data. I'm not the only one looking at it on a daily basis, that's for sure. So that's all I have tonight.
Thank you very much. All right. So now we are on to recommended actions. We have approval of the minutes from the October 7 special meeting. Can I get a second?
Oh, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes abstentions? All right. Approval of minutes from October 13?
Some will.
Aye.
Any discussions, changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes abstentions? Thank you. All right. And now we are on to approval of collective bargaining agreement between Simsbury Board of Education and the Simsbury Federation of Educational Personnel.
That's me. So this is an agreement we reached a couple weeks ago with, this is our group of paraprofessionals and secretaries in the school district, a few other positions, some library assistants are in this group, but mostly you think about paraprofessionals and secretaries. From beginning to end, this is the longest negotiation I've ever done, but that's because we took a six-month timeout. We started this negotiation way back in late February, early March. We exchanged proposals. We had one session in March and then decided to pause. We were, we asked the association whether they wanted to do virtual negotiating. They chose at that time to not do that, and we filed the appropriate paper of work with the state labor board to say we were going to extend the negotiations at least into summer, and it turned out to be into fall. So what we ended up doing is negotiating this pretty much through the month of September once the school had reopened. As is typical, it ended up as a three-year agreement, and you could see in the wages that the general wage increase in the first year was 2%. In the second year, 2.15, and in the third year, 2.35. I will note, in the second year, you will see an additional wage increase for what on the exhibit is categories one, two, and three. What that really is about is that our secretaries, when we compared them to secretaries in other towns, were not as competitive as our paraprofessionals were with other towns. So this is sort of extra compensation targeted toward our secretaries as opposed toward the whole group. And that was certainly seen by the parties and agreed to as a strategy to negotiate this contract. So that was the wage piece of it. As you know, insurance benefits are always an important part of these negotiations. We did achieve some prescription management. Those of the, from the negotiating team will remember our talk about specialty pharmacy management and mandatory generic substitution. We were hoping for some additional pharmacy management provisions that the group did not agree to, but they therefore paid a higher premium rate than, so they have gone from current of 15% to 16%, 16.5%, and then 17.5% of the premium share that they will pay. And that is fairly typical of our negotiations. The other language provisions in here really are provisions that now often the groups will compare contracts. All of these things that we agreed to make them equal now to what the custodians' benefits are. So you'll see a slight increase in vacation days for our most senior employees, those with 20 or more years of experience, an increase in a life insurance policy that is now equivalent to the custodians, and then the ability, if you've given 25 years of service, to have a normal retirement a little earlier, three years earlier at 62. And then the other language is there in your exhibit. I would not note any of it. It's more technical language to just clear up a couple of provisions. So it was a good negotiation once we really got in earnest with it, and I think fair given the current financial realities facing municipalities at this point. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Move that the Board of Education ratified and proposed changes in the collective bargaining agreement between the Simsbury Board of Education and the Simsbury Federation of Educational Personnel since 3月1日2020年2023年
Second.
Any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Literally carried. Thank you very much. Thank you, Neil.
Thank you. I should note that Sue Lemke was my partner on this one. I didn't do it myself.
We will make sure Sue gets credit. Okay. And now we are on to information and reports. Capstone Board of Education.
All righty. So I'd like to kick that off and introduce to you Liz McKay. Liz came through a very rigorous interview process this spring and emerged as the person that we saw fit that could really bring this to life, this program, Capstone Program. Also remembering that the focus right now is on Simsbury High School and the Capstone Program because it is a graduation requirement. We'll go through that a little bit more. But what's also very important to remember is that this is a K-12 endeavor as we go through. So in talking with Liz, it's like a three-to-five-year project because as we develop and make available capstone experiences for our students at the high school, it then moves, we want to have similar experiences at the middle level, upper elementary, and primary. And it's all aligned, and Liz will talk about this more with you, but she will explain to you, but it's all aligned to the vision of the graduate competencies that we see as a K-12 way in which to really build skills and competencies with students as they go through our school system. So we can go to the next page. And I think one of the things that's most important here is clearly, this was put forward in 2017 by the Connecticut General Assembly, and it was considered to be a mastery-based diploma assessment. And this is an opportunity that can take a variety of different experiences. It could be a portfolio, a project, an internship. There's so many pieces, and we'll go through some of those tonight with you. But again, an opportunity for students to really dig deep into these competencies that we see as lifelong skills that will aid our students as they enter the world of college, work, wherever, that they're really, really important. So Liz was a longtime social studies teacher at Simsbury High School and has stepped into this. So the nice piece is that she's got relationships and opportunities, and she and I have had some good conversations. But as she said, she's learning so much in a very short period of time, and I have to commend her. So hopefully you'll get a sense what we're trying to do, is open this up to you tonight. Already some communication has gone out, but this is for the current freshman class that we want to ensure freshmen and sophomores.
It's sophomores for...
Sophomores.
Yes, so it is the class of 2023.
23.
It's approaching.
So anyway, I want to kick it off to Liz. She had the opportunity to give a preview at a Board of Ed Curriculum Committee in September, but this is something that's going to be very informative, I think, to you and to the community as a whole.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you.
This has actually been, for me especially, a really bright spot in all of what we've been going through in 2020. I have had really wonderful opportunities at the high school to speak with a lot of teachers and department supervisors about student work that they're very excited about. And so it has been, in a way, really wonderful to be able to look at this and see so much of the core of what makes our work our work. So we are looking right now at a capstone experience that would be completed in grades 11 or 12. This year's sophomores, as we said, would be the first class for which this is mandatory. So we do feel pressured to get underway with it and to get the word out to the public, which is a big part of the reason why I am here tonight. It needs to be in grades 11 or 12 because it's the cap. It's sort of the finishing piece where students can exhibit the knowledge and skills that they've acquired and grow through this experience as a transition to whatever comes afterwards. The state requirement is for time equal to a year-long course, but we'll talk in a minute about how some of that time would be potentially in a classroom, but much of it might not be, depending on the path that the student chooses. So there is a little bit more flexibility with this than we see in a typical curricular sequence in high schools. I think there are very close connections between a couple of the Board's strategic plan goals and the Capstone Program at the high school and throughout the district. The first goal, obviously, is student growth, right? And this program, I think, will challenge students to become a little more self-directed and to grow through the inquiry process. It also provides, as Erin said, a really excellent opportunity for a final assessment of mastery of the six competencies of the vision of the graduate, and it does that really by emphasizing the kinds of skills and habits that are evident in those competencies. The part of this that I think I like the most is that we can see with it in a very student-centered and student-directed way. It's really interesting. and does that really by emphasizing the kinds of skills and habits that are evident in those competencies. The part of this that I think I like the most is that we conceive of it in a very student-centered and student-directed way. It's really intense for a student to play to their strengths, to showcase their learning, and to grow as an individual. It places a lot of emphasis on the process as well as whatever product the student might produce through the capstone experience. So what I'd like to do is talk just a little bit about some of the work that we've been doing and we intend to do, and to show you some of what the capstone experience is looking like as we're conceiving of it, kind of the vision of what this will be. So the first thing that I took on when I came to the high school was to try to figure out what existing paths are schools in the state using, and what do we have at SHS that we're already offering to students? How do we build on that? So there were three paths that we identified, looking at what we have and the vision for what we want this experience to be. I think the first really important thing is that we already have a lot of courses at the high school, wonderful programs to students, whether it's the AP Capstone Program, our Project Lead the Way programs, our art department, and you can see in this room has really fabulous programs to help students develop their portfolios and showcase those. So we are very fortunate that we have so many great programs already in existence. And a number of our students, when I looked at the class of 2020 and I looked at the course-taking patterns and their transcripts, about 35% of students were probably already enrolled in an option that really was a capstone experience. So that was a great starting place. We've been working this fall to talk with especially the elective course supervisors about other options for capstone, and we've identified places for that in all of the student course clusters, for those of you who are familiar with the elective clusters. So basically, students with any strong interest in the high school would have a course-driven path that they could take. We also recognize, though, that there will be students who have interests that lie outside of that. We don't offer everything at the high school. And so for that, I am looking this year to construct a framework that, as we'll talk about curriculum a day later this week, that would sort of catch students who aren't already in a path. Those might be students who have unique interests or students who haven't found their place until later in high school. So in Project Lead the Way, you have to take a couple prerequisites. They may need a supportive place in which to embark on this journey. So a student-driven capstone is more of an independent study where students could complete a creative work, they could make a community contribution and do a different, more kind of community-based or service-based project that way, or they could complete a special interest project. And the way that that would be overseen is through a framework that I'm developing this year. I'll talk more about that in just a moment. And then last, there has been some work in our school counseling department around experiential things for students. We have about 25 students this year enrolled in in-house internships even with COVID going on. So we have a number of students who serve as teaching assistants or tech support or things along those lines, developing those into capstone experiences. And we really hope to grow the community connections as well through this. That piece is going to be a little trickier this year particularly because of the circumstances. So we'll be looking at that down the road. So I have, as I said, taken a look at these three different paths and tried to define them and helped people in the building to understand them. As I've been looking at the different courses and considering capstone options, we want to make sure that the options we offer to students have kind of the core inquiry components that we're looking for in a capstone experience. We want to make sure that these experiences build on students' knowledge and skills and that they have ways to access those either through a multi-course sequence or through the opportunity for research within the course itself. We want to make sure that students can direct this process as they write their own plans and proposals. The planning phase is a big part of what helps, I think, students transition from high school curriculum to the career world. There is a huge emphasis and inquiry on reflection and revision and persistence, which we see appear really often in the vision of the graduate competencies, those skills to rework and revise and move ahead. Students would produce a final product, but again, the emphasis of capstone is as much on your process and your ability to grow and improve as it is on the product that the student produces. One of the pieces that we're really most looking forward to is providing students with opportunities to present and demonstrate more publicly the work that they're doing in the capstone experience, organizing a school-wide demonstration day, making use of existing panels and departments of people from the community to speak with the students about the projects. And then last, for the students, all students, there would be a final reflective piece that not only kind of looks back on the experience, but also looks forward and connects what they've learned to what comes next. So this is sort of regardless of whether the student enrolls in an existing course or in a new sort of capstone framework, this would be the commonality of experience with those students.
Liz, good question. Great. Did you have, the demonstration component of this, so how would we currently live like AP Seminar? Would that be an example? Don't the kids present at the end of that course?
Yes, so in the AP Capstone two-course sequence, they do presentations both in AP Seminar and the Presentation on Rural Defense and AP Research. So I think for the stu-, for some students, it would look very much like that within Simsbury High School. In some of our capstone programs, there are already demonstrations that are real into those programs. So for example, in the engineering project, Lead the Way, they have participated in the electro-bombs where they actually race the vehicle. So there are all kinds of demonstrations, like the culinary program, like cater and events. There are all kinds of demonstrations that students might participate in as well in addition to the traditional.
And that's exactly what we want to build upon. What is it that we already currently have in place and expand upon it?
So as I said, I do recognize there are going to be some students who don't find their course path or who don't find it early on, especially for the class of 2023 because this is a newer requirement. So I have been working to develop an SHS capstone framework, and this, we'll talk about in the curriculum committee meeting on Thursday as well, that would involve eight phases, and students could progress through these phases with key kind of assessments at each phase. And part of the beauty of this very generalized structure is that it allows for self-direction for students. It's very flexible in that students could start in the spring of junior year, do some of their work over the summer, finish in senior year. They could do the entire thing in senior year. The goal here is to make this an experience that students can invest in. I think it's also really exciting because these phases, as I have conceived of them, are strongly tied, as we were saying earlier, to the vision of the graduate competencies. So as I have worked to begin to lay out the curriculum that surrounds those phases, the learning targets are all directly aligned to the vision of the graduate competencies. We have been working to revise course registration materials, and this is one of the key components of our communication strategies. Communication obviously has its challenges with COVID. We don't see as many people in the building as we typically see. So I have been thinking a lot about how to communicate with a number of different groups in the school community and in the larger community. The focus with students is going to kick in fairly soon. I am planning to create course registration video for students and also to visit their classrooms at the end of November or at the beginning of December. This will help, whether they're virtual visits or in-person visits, I don't know, but this will help students have an opportunity to ask questions about what's coming. And for students and parents, we've been working on making sure that the program of studies clearly indicates capstone options, that the Learning Cluster's book does as well, and that Power School, when students and parents go in to register and select courses, notes that as an option. So that will help, I think, students and parents to better understand the options that are out there. We are also, many of the members of the community and some of you, your parents of high school students may have seen in our online open house, we put out a video introduction to capstone for parents to watch and students to watch, and that went out in the principal's list serve as well. And as the year goes on, we are hoping to work toward including capstone on the webpage and eventually in the springtime to create sort of a capstone handbook that people can refer to if they have a lot of questions about the process. I have also been working really closely with teachers and counselors, making sure that I understand all of the programs, and I've been kind of a go-between for questions that school counselors have for departments and vice versa. I read regularly with Georgia Robert at the high school and then also Erin, as she said, to discuss my work with building administration and the district. And I'm looking forward in the spring to more coordination with Henry James as well as scheduling coordination within our building to try to make this possible within whatever master schedule we end up having for next year because of the air with COVID. And then last, you know, I hope through my presence here tonight to be communicating a bit more with the larger community, I hope to maintain a number of community connections that have already been made and to grow those as the years go forward in order to incorporate the community into our endeavors. So I'm very excited to continue to sort of move beyond SHS in some ways now that I have had a chance to talk to so many people there. I've been speaking to other coordinators at other schools. I have a chance tomorrow to attend a virtual demonstration for Avon's capstone project, which I think will be really interesting. And I'm meeting next week with one of the coordinators from Joel Marlowe, which also has kind of a whole pathways approach in one of this, looking to, as I said, explore more opportunities within the community. As Erin said, to understand inquiry-based learning strategies K-12 that already exist. And of course, always recognizing, we don't know exactly what's coming next. We hope this will have to be virtual next year in the pilot year, but if it is, it is. We will plan for that appropriately. So that's what I have been working on. If anybody has questions or comments or concerns for me?
I would, I would just, I mean, very exciting. Thank you, Liz. That was great. Certainly been super busy the first couple of months here. What I get, and we just haven't had enough time to talk about it, right? Because of the circumstances that we've been in. But what you get really excited about is the strategic plan of a year and a half ago that we brought to fruition and when we felt really good about one that's grounded in the vision of the graduate competencies, and we talked a lot about coherence and how coherently this work can tie together K-12 once we get the ball moving down the field a little bit at the high school, right? And eventually with that big kind of challenge and big hurdle of we talk about these competencies to provide experiences where you learn into them, process-oriented, like you talked about, Liz, but at some point, we need to figure out how to measure them. And the framework you're talking about and then our ability to work that down the school system, I think is really, really exciting. I really do. So, you know, thank you for the early work here. And again, in the challenges we're in right now and what we're working on, to be able to talk about this a little bit is a breath of fresh air for us as well. And also, thank you, Liz.
But yeah, we are, and just thankful for this was a position that was approved through you and to put it in. And just to, as I said earlier, the relationships and the opportunities for someone to really champion the work and bring it to life makes others excited about it and want to learn about it and get kids involved. Because this is about the kids. This is about our students and providing them opportunities that really follow them and can follow them in life, the way in which they go through this process and this opportunity. So this is, you know, as we plan these things and put someone in the place, it's the work that she's done in these last two months is remarkable considering where we are and what we're doing. But this is important work, and I think it will certainly pay off as we move forward. So Susan, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, not at all. I just had a couple of questions, and it's a little bit about, I always worry, so you've got 10 graders who are a couple of months into school and we're going to start talking to them about picking this capstone project. And I worry that they feel pressured to stay in these clusters that maybe they don't love. So I just, I like that you're saying there's going to be a capstone handbook. And I just want to really make sure that these kids know that there are options outside their clusters. And I get the tying it in because we want to say, if this works for you and it's seamless, look at how great that is. But I just want to make sure that we're really clear that you don't have to stay in something you're not excited about just to get through the capstone.
I think the beauty and the importance of a capstone class, not just the AP class, but the low-class class for students that is kind of a catch-all, is that it does offer students the opportunities to find a new interest layer, to change their minds a little bit. They could take that in the 12th grade, fresh out of nowhere.
Right.
So I think that's an important option, especially as we're beginning this process, everyone's feeling it out. It will help all the students to feel secure that if there isn't that particular option for them, they do have an option that they can design.
Right, because I, it is so natural for, you know, visual arts and you have the art show. And if you're in theater, you have musical or one act or whatever. There are so many opportunities kind of built into so much of what we do. I was curious about somebody who does kind of choose their own path. Will they be tied to an advisor and are they being graded at points throughout the process? Like, what does that look like?
Right. So again, in talking with administrators, particularly about 12 graders who are in this experience, it's going to be very helpful to have the course framework that exists for them. We would probably see them quite a bit in the beginning. They'd have regular check-ins as they went along. If they weren't performing in a way that we thought was progressing, then they would have less independence and probably more of us in support of them. And students will definitely be able to, if they choose to write poetry, for example, to work with a faculty advisor who would be able to help them with that. Or perhaps if they know someone else that would work with the community eventually to spend some of their time doing that. So I do think we're trying to design it in a way where we recognize that they are high school students, and sometimes they do require our support. And although it is directed by them, it is definitely supported by us.
That's great.
Good. Can I just piggyback on my question?
Yeah, go right on.
Just how, so how's this being received by the teachers themselves then, right? So if you've got, they have an added responsibility now, right, to be these advisors in the capstone, their capstone students? Are they looking at that as, oh my God, I got, you know, I got every other thing coming at me right now because of COVID, and now I've got to be an advisor on top of it? Or are they setting it up?
You know, the teachers who I've spoken to are the teachers of the capstone classes. They're already doing this. So it's not new to them, and there are teachers who are very excited about doing this. So that already exists. The teachers of the capstone optional classes, who would have some students doing more work for capstone, those teachers, I think, are also very excited because most of them want to grow their programs. They are very passionate about what they teach, and they see what their students are getting out of it. And I think that they're actually quite excited to attract students who have those strong interests as well. So I think from the teachers that I've come to, those custom optional classes, they're quite excited about it actually. I always worried about this too, but I think they feel very optimistic about it at this point.
And I'm just curious, I'm sorry if I'm not getting it. On the optional class, is it, it's something that will be a set period? And then when you say us, as you said, I, us, we will be directing them. I don't remember what it was. Maybe it's us, not we, but yeah, maybe I'm she. Those people are teachers all over the place who will have their own classes as well. So there'll be a set place for these kids to go and get directors? And is it like letter of recommendations for colleges? Are we going to have the kids go to teachers and say, hey, would you be my advisor?
So I think the ideal for it is that the students enroll in a capstone class that has a teacher. So there is a teacher that is dedicated to monitoring and assessing those kind of markers along the road for students. The expertise for the students, if they seek it, comes from a faculty advisor. So they would do a lot of consulting with the faculty advisor or the community mentor. But the piece of it that involves the assessment of the vision of the graduate would likely take place with the teacher who resides there. So a lot of schools, the capstone coordinator does some of that for the students who are enrolled there. Depending on how many students it is and what minor responsibilities are, we have to figure that out. What we don't know at this point is exactly what students will choose. We don't know.
So when you say a capstone class, it's not necessarily, I've gone through the whole cluster. There are going to be denoted classes, let's say disqualified you for capstone?
That is the proposal.
We're bringing that to the Board of Ed Curriculum Committee on Thursday morning.
Okay, so one year, this can be your capstone class?
Yes. Yeah. And what we loved about it when we've been talking, we're trying to be open-minded about this and trying to think through it, whether a student decides to do it in the, you know, first semester, second semester, junior year. And what I loved, it just sort of emerged in our And what I'd loved, it just sort of emerged in our conversation, second semester, junior year, summertime internship, exploration, research, and then coming back and finishing up in their first semester of their senior year, or do it fully in their senior year. We're trying to provide choice, you know, with interest and not bog kids down, but get them excited about engaging in something like this that will continue to help build them and make it as, I love, as Liz talks about it, so self-directed. They take responsibility.
What an incredible opportunity to put in a college application process that they'll be going through.
We have found with the AP Capstone students that their college interviewing process was great. It was like, I go into this interview and I have all this to talk about, that I've done this, you know, and college students haven't had that. Now they're all, which I think is.
Are we encouraged, are we going to like put in a recommendation, like recommend juniors or seniors, or is it really up to them to do this junior?
The way, you mean the way earlier teachers made recommendations, is that what you're saying? No, so this would be something that the student and the parent, when they go into Power School, they would choose. I think for some students, it will be a natural choice within the cluster, and for others, it may not seem as obvious, and then they will choose a more independent route or experience route or whatever they determine is best for them.
A clear point before this, the communication element of this will be really important.
And you're using APs as an example, because this is something that is for all students. This is not an AP course.
Correct.
This is for all students at all levels, and everybody will find something that works for them.
Correct, so I think, again, part of the importance of having that Capstone class is that it offers that sort of opportunity to a student that's not already in one of these accelerated course sequences.
Right.
Which I think is very important.
Are you planning to work with the Chamber of Commerce and reach out to local businesses through them, or?
I think that part of it has yet to be developed. So I would love to work with them as we kind of convention of community connections piece, which hopefully happens, I don't exactly when, given. I don't want, I'm wary of getting everyone very excited about it, and then just having to, it's like hurry up and wait, you know, and then wait a little bit, so.
That's great. Thank you for, you've clearly done a ton of work already, so.
Thank you all so much.
Really thank you for bringing us up to speed.
We're continuing to communicate with everyone, especially students and parents about this in the months.
Yeah, we really look forward to.
I have one comment. It's, it's wonderful to see, you know, the position from discussion last year, really it's like, to kind of see it in motion and to hear you talk about it with such passion and to see the work you put in. Thank you, and this is, this is a great progression to have.
Well, I love to do this. It's one of the things that I have worked most about, my own work, and I have put it into every class that I've taught, so now I have a chance to do it, and I really appreciate it.
Thanks very much.
Yeah, appreciate it.
All right, so next up on our agenda, which are presented by Jason. Look at that speaker material.
Only have to do that.
So, I'll give you an update on the Henry James renovation project. The project is wrapping up. We are substantially complete, which means by contract, the space can be occupied for its intended use. There are still workers on site, basically wrapping up with the last finishing touches, so things like paint touch-ups, minor casework, pieces, cabinets, sheet rock repairs. So the intention is that by the end of November, we should see much less of these workers on site. Hopefully that shall be wrapped up in that timeframe. And I did bring some pictures of where we are. So here's the, some shots in the library.
Which we were lucky enough to be in.
Yeah, beautiful.
Very well done.
They did, they did some amazing work. On the left, we have a classroom with the two ceiling and light and floors and furniture. And on the right, we have a wood shop.
Which is remarkably different.
Wow. That is stunning.
They're dust collector.
Who knew they were dust collectors?
Yes. And in the family consumer sciences area, appliances.
Wow. That is a work of art. Look at that.
Completely. Fifty's, hold that class.
Yeah.
Hold it down.
Really beautiful. Jason, one question on the, on the budget. Have contingencies been identified or there, is there a punch list of things that needs to get done?
Yeah, there's, there's like.
Anything of significance? I'm just in, okay.
No. I'd say we're, we're coming in with easily between a million and one four contingencies left over.
That's a, that's a nice.
And then the auditorium is absolutely spectacular. When visiting, if you get a chance, it's really impressive.
We did peek in there when we had our dating marriage. It really looked lovely. It'll be great when we come here.
Yeah.
Performances in there.
Yeah.
And other than that, there's not much work to report on since they're wrapping up the work.
Yeah, I know, it looks lovely for me, I did double these job.
Yeah, the landscaping and everything is just, it really has done.
Can I just ask you, you keep saying, or you said a couple times, 1.2 million for contingencies. Can I interpret that as saying we're coming in at $1.2 million under budget?
Correct.
Perfect.
Correct.
Say that out loud to everybody.
Just to clarify, that's 1.2 million under budget.
Yes.
Is that good?
My time on.
I did that, Susan, can you say it again?
I, I think Jason said we were 1.2 million under budget on.
I thought I heard. Glad that you reiterated that. Very important.
Thank you, Jason. All right, Amy, speaking of 1.2 million under budget, would you like to step up?
No, I feel like, I feel like the first presentation of the evening, I have like no fun photos.
Numbers, numbers.
But I am, when I'm done, you all do get to go home, so there's. All right, so you may have noticed, I changed the format of your quarterly presentation just a little bit. So this is probably more for my benefit than yours. You all have been around longer than I have.
It's all about you.
It's all about me. Thank you for recognizing that. So I broke out the state and federal grant awards into each one that we receive directly, and then just a brief summary on what we use it for and what our current year award is in comparison to our prior year award. So I don't have all these memorized yet, so this really helps me to look at everything holistically. So if this is too busy for you, feel free to let me know. I will not be offended at all. It's just how I look at it, so I just thought I would share, kind of share the way I do it with all of you. So I'm not going to go through each one of these, I'll just touch on some highlights. Not all of our grants have been awarded yet, so we're just going to touch on a couple of the larger increases or decreases for the grants that have been awarded. So the first one, you'll see with a larger decrease, is our Open Choice Attendance and Early Learning Grant. So they had a decrease of about $93,000 compared to the prior fiscal year. So this grant is based on student population. So last year, we had 178 students, and this year we have 171 students, and we get the $8,000 per student. So that decrease in seven students is about $56,000 of that loss. We may receive an additional supplemental appropriation in the fourth quarter, so we received one last year. I'm hoping we'll receive one again this year, so hopefully that'll bring that up a little bit.
And then down under the federal grant awards, the other larger increase here was our IDA grant. We had an increase of about $35,000 compared to the prior fiscal year. Moving on to expenditures, you'll notice I added a column this year for this update for the year-to-date expenditures for fiscal year 20 as compared to where we are for fiscal year 21. Again, it's just how my brain works. I, it's easier for me to look at dollars versus percentages. And then I'll just touch on a couple of the highlights here that are on COVID-related because as you can imagine, the majority are COVID-related. So under the insurance and pension, you'll see that there was an increase of about $120,000, and this was for our defined benefit plan and our OPEB pension annual required contributions. We had an increase of about $121,000 or something to that effect. Oh, 121,108 increase for our annual required contribution from last year to this year, and that was a budgeted increase. And then down under the outer district tuition, you'll see that the dollar values, it's easier to see here, so last year at this time, we were $172,000. This year, we were only at $3,000. This was just the timing of one large payment. So last year, we paid crack $175,000 for some tuition for students, and this year, we're going to be making a similar payment, however, we just have not cut the check yet. And then also out of the, out of district tuition, we are looking at a preliminary deficit related to our special education students. There was two unanticipated outplacements during the year, but we're still reviewing each student to come up with a more solid analysis on where we think we're going to end up overall. So more to come on that. And then the last page is just the enrollment comparison and staffing comparison. This is something that's been presented to you all by Neil at previous meetings, but we typically, it's just something that we typically include in the quarterly. And then the last item is just your COVID update, and honestly, there's nothing really to report here. The last time I reported, I think we were about $2,000 higher in expenditures, and that $2,000 decrease, we've just closed out some purchase orders, and there's just been some savings related to that. We just put in the purchase order for a little bit higher than anticipated, and then when it was closed out, it decreased a little bit. So there actually hasn't really been any activity related to additional COVID expenditures for the last couple of weeks.
You mean, I know what we were talking about, is it, is it the CARES Act money that we had an opportunity to go back and apply for a little bit more because there's a redistribution?
Yes, so I don't know if we'll get the redistribution, but they did allow us to put in for the redistribution. So when they gave us our allocation, it was based on a survey. So that survey, as you can imagine, a lot of districts inflated their costs, so they don't think that each district will be able to spend the amount that they've been allocated. So they did say that we could go back, and if we have expenditures related to COVID expenditures, we could go back and reapply. So we did apply for an additional $80,000. So we'll let you know if we hear back, whether it's approved or not.
Okay. Any questions for Amy?
Yeah, I do, the awards that we have not gotten, I'm trying to go back, I've lost my place now, that have not been received yet, when do you think they're coming? They were.
Usually in the second or third quarter, depending on the award.
All right.
You, you may have answered this at a previous meeting, I just don't remember. Why, why things like report card software under COVID expenses?
So that was a new software, and of course, you asked me now, when it's not fresh in my head.
Sorry.
But I do remember that that was a software because of the distance learning, and then they weren't going to use the paper report cards like they had before, and they were all going to be digital or online.
Okay.
And all of the mailing costs that go into report card, paper and all of that, is now not going to take place, so it will fit into the budget as we go forward.
Makes sense. Thanks.
Gotcha. Anyone else? All right, thank you very much, ma'am. Appreciate it. And we're at our second public audience, of which we have none. So that would put us with our next board meeting, tentatively scheduled for the conference room here on Tuesday, November 10. And I would take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.